Right, oh yeah. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
He's here.
Here he comes.
Right on time.
Told you. Kurt DeMeyer must have bitten his pike.
Our second board of all the year.
Yay.
I said it's not.
Yeah, but look at who's on.
It's not every day that I be Bill to a meeting.
Hi Kurt.
Yeah.
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 Good afternoon, everyone. This is the February 26, 2018 meeting of the DeKalb City Council Committee of the Whole Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Here.
Fanoukian?
Here.
Markwart?
Here.
Fagan?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Burbick?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Keep present.
There are no items on our Committee of the Whole Meeting this evening that are on the regular agenda, so we'll move on to considerations. Our first one is transit consolidation. I'd like to ask Public Works Director Tim Holderman to please come forward to speak to this item. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, it's our pleasure to be here this evening to talk about the Transit Consolidation Project. As you know, we've been looking at consolidating the city bus line with the NIU Husky Bus Line, and so we're going to give you an update as to where we are in that process tonight. We'll go through a brief overview of DSATs and transit governance to begin with, then we'll look at the results of a recent transit development plan that was completed and approved by the DSATs Policy Committee this summer. We'll talk about the benefits of an integrated Husky City Bus Line system, and then we'll talk about the next steps. But before we get too far, I do want to introduce one of the city's newest employees, Bob Boren. He is our Transit Consolidation Coordinator. He's been brought on as a temporary, approximately one-year, half-time employee with the city. And Bob is with me this evening. Bob has over forty years of transit experience. Twenty-five of those years were spent in Ames, Iowa, where he designed and implemented the university community bus system there. That's a national award-winning system. Over the last ten years, he's served as a consultant to many other communities, universities that have merged their system. So we have one of the foremost national experts in this area to assist us in this consolidation effort over the next year. So, if you're like me, DSATs and how it works and how it's structured is a little bit of a mystery. So I wanted to take this opportunity to help you understand, as I do, how it all works with regard to transit. This graphic shows the DSATs Policy Committee box in blue. Notice that it says "at all" because there are several other committees within the committee organization of DSATs. But we'll just talk about the Policy Committee, which is the primary decision-making body of DSATs. DSATs is the Sycamore Area, DeKalb-Sycamore Area Transit Study, DSATs. It is the MPO, or Metropolitan Planning Organization, for our area. When an urbanized area reaches fifty thousand people, it has to establish an MPO, in this case DSATs, in order to administer state and federal grants. So this is something that we need for our community, DSATs, in order to get federal and state money for our transportation and our transit services. So the Policy Committee is made up of seven-member groups, six-member groups, which are shown there, three representatives from City of DeKalb sit on the Policy Committee, Alderman Fanoukian, Mayor Smith, and City Manager Gara. Two from Sycamore, and then the remainder have one vote. And much as city council and staff work together, staff work together with the Policy Committee to bring action items forward, primarily planning items or items associated with conformance with the requirements of grants. Those items are brought forward and voted by the Policy Committee, voted on by the Policy Committee, and then they're implemented by staff. Notice the dash line towards Policy Committee because the staff is not working under their authority. They are City of DeKalb employees. So all the rules apply to these City of DeKalb employees, including getting their primary job responsibilities and objectives from the city. But they're working hand-in-hand with the Policy Committee. Notice also, there's two areas, transportation and transit. Those are broadly the two categories that DSATs covers. Transportation is our Fund 09, Section 10, and transit is 0920. Transportation are the roads and highways, the infrastructure. Transit, on the other hand, includes the buses, all the supplies and systems that go into the buses, the employees. That's the VAC, is our contractor that operates that. So transit is more of an operation. Transportation is the infrastructure. Also, the amount of money here that the city receives in these two areas is considerably different. Transportation, about three hundred thousand, covers mostly our costs of staff for doing transportation planning. Transit, three point five million. So there's a lot of money involved in the transit. Notice also the dash line between City of DeKalb and transportation versus the solid line from City of DeKalb to transit. That has to do with the flow of money coming in through the city. In one instance, in transportation, we act as a fiscal agent. The Policy Committee is making the decisions. The money is coming through the City of DeKalb, okay? In the transit world, we are the grant recipients. We actually receive the money for our purposes, and therefore, all the fiduciary responsibility and all the covenants associated with those agreements are city councils to abide by. So there is a little bit difference there. And I wanted to point that out as a difference as we move forward. So transit is the one where we have greater control, and city council has the ultimate say in where that money is spent. So we talked about the Transit Development Plan, or TDP. We'll talk a little bit about the findings. These plans are done on about every five or six years with a five-year planning horizon. So the plan that we just developed is over the next five years. It looks at existing conditions. It also surveyed our riders and looked at ridership data to come up with some new recommendations for efficiency and effectiveness enhancements. We also then went back to the primary stakeholders and got their input on these changes that were being proposed. The primary objective, improve transit services. And we want to look in particular the cost-benefits of integrating the city and bus line because it is quite unusual to have two bus systems working in one community. We're looking at integrating because we know that a combined system will be able to leverage considerably more grant money. So part of the Transit Development Plan was to look at our existing services. This map shows our green line, our blue line, and our Kish line. The blue line runs, blue line and green line runs Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, no weekend service, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Costs fifty cents. If you're over sixty, have a disability, or are Medicaid, it's free. It is not specifically a fixed route. In other words, it doesn't have to go from point A to point B. If there's a rider that wants to go a couple blocks in a different direction, the drivers have to accommodate that. It's not, it's called a deviated fixed system. The Kishwaki line runs Monday through Friday, and it's primarily to serve Kishwaki College students. Three morning routes and four afternoon routes. So that's the city's bus line fixed, or deviated fixed, system. The university fixed system has eleven different routes. Six of those routes run from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Route seven goes up to the hospital from around Barcima, the turnaround there. And that runs 7:00 a.m. to midnight. That's one of the core routes for the university. But again, only Monday through Friday. Then on the weekends, they do run routes 10 and 11. We'll show that in a minute. But here, this system is free except for Route six, seven, and 11, which costs residents a dollar. Of course, faculty and students ride all the buses for free. The city also has a demand-response system, or Dial-a-Ride, where you can call back six days in advance, and you can arrange for bus service wherever you want for a dollar fifty. Again, the same provisions apply for free service, over sixty, disabled, or on Medicaid. This graph shows kind of the differences between the demand-response and fixed system within the city, and then compares it to the Husky line with regard to passenger trips, revenue miles, and revenue hours. You see that the university has about ten times more fixed route passenger trips than the city. So Husky line is a lot bigger when it comes to fixed routes. When it comes to a demand-response, compared to the fixed, within the city, you see that revenue hours and revenue miles make up about eighty to ninety percent of VAC's effort. So VAC is primarily a demand-response system. Husky is primarily a fixed system. That's going to become important when we start talking about consolidation. I did mention that we did a rider survey. Here's some of the results. Sounds very typical for most transit. But there were three different types of surveys, the on-bus, off-bus, I'm sorry, the off-bus survey, and then the on-bus back, and the on-bus NIU survey. Notice that number one for the on-bus and NIU on, off-bus and NIU on-bus were the same, shorter wait times between buses. Also highlighted in black are three common to all three different categories. Knowing the bus will be on time. Knowing exactly what time the bus will get to my stop. And the buses run later in the evening. So these were the type of responses that we used, as well as the consultant's observations, to develop enhancements to the system. And when they developed the enhancements, they were looking at certain principles, and those are listed on this slide. First, increase frequency. Also, increase the span, in other words, the time the buses are running. Look at simplifying the routes, make them more direct. Reducing overlapping service and simplifying the schedules. And there, we show some of the standardized core service, which runs every day, Monday through Sunday, and then the weekday and weeknight service. So I'd like to go through now and show a little bit about what the enhancements look like. We've seen what's existing. We've seen the survey. We know what the objectives were by looking at this list. And so what are the results? First is develop a core service. Take the green line and keep it north of the tracks, because going across railroad tracks is a hassle and causes a lot of time. That's number one. Keep the green line up above the tracks. Use line six, then, to serve the southern portion. And use Route seven to duplicate the service that goes out to northwest Madison and the shopping centers to get even better frequency. Get that down to thirty minutes, every thirty minutes a bus coming. So this core of six, seven, and green runs from 6:30 a.m. to midnight, every day of the week. So that's a huge increase, particularly with regard to weekend, as it applies to our city. Also, with regard to Sycamore, recognize that the Sycamore service does not have a lot of ridership, and the bus drivers are going, articulating through Sycamore, and really takes a lot of time. So what they want to do is create more of a straight fixed route, going from the shopping areas up to Jewel-Osco, just a fixed route, up and back. And then serve the remainder of the city with a flex route. Flex route is, drivers have a general area that they're covering, but they can go where the demand is at any given time. So that's what would be the Sycamore route. The Husky route basically will be the same as it has been, except the times will be much easier to remember. You can see on those routes how the time varies from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m., 4:00 p.m., 8:00 p.m., all over the board. The new routes all go from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So much easier scheduling. And then the weekday on the evenings, again, the core route is going from 6:30 to midnight. And in addition, two additional routes, the gold route, which is eight, and then ten, which is the dark red. And they would go from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. Additionally, on the weekends, we would also have eight and ten in addition to the core, and they would run from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday on the weekend. So you can just tell, there's a lot more frequency. The interval between these buses coming is much shorter. The overall service is going to be considerably enhanced by consolidating the Husky and city bus line. Some of the other things that the report recommended was to increase the NIU break service, and that would essentially mirror the weekend service. Again, there'd be the core plus routes eight and ten that would be serving from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. With the efficiencies, we believe that we can add paratransit services, so we can do more with what we're doing with the Dial-a-Ride than what we did. And also increasing the Elburn Shuttle. The Elburn Shuttle right now does not run Monday through Thursday. It runs Friday and Sunday. We would increase four trips, Monday through Thursday, to Elburn, two in the morning, two in the afternoon. We see the demand. We would meet that demand with the new schedule. Also, we're looking at even more additional services. Once the efficiencies are recognized and we can begin to use those efficiencies to add services, we'll look at these components. These are significant, because we're talking about a downtown collector, which is not shown on here, by the way. That'd be Thursday and Saturday night. That'd be getting the kids from the university that to downtown. It'd be a bus service that runs from 6:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And then the enhancements are shown on this graphic, which include serving South Fourth Street and a Park 88 Flex. So the dark red line is running from Lincoln Highway down Fourth Street to where 3M and Target are, and then from there, there would be a flex that would be able to take people into their location of their work. So this would be a huge advantage. We've heard from several of the employers down there that people in DeKalb can't get there on the current transit system, so we want to try to fill this gap. Also, possible future routes would be going to Cortland and Mason Park, and then also looking at North Fourteenth. When the consultant looked at the data, these are areas that may develop in the future because there is a demand there. So we see that there's a huge enhancement available by consolidating the systems. So now we turn our attention to how to do that. What are the options? Well, the first option is, let's just do better at being two different systems. Let's just start coordinating better, and we can fold NIU into the funding that we get from the state and feds. Actually, we can purchase up to twenty percent of our total transit grant amount. We can purchase services from NIU. So we could join in that way. Twenty percent of three point five is about seven hundred thousand dollars. Okay? To give you an idea, the Husky line is about four million dollars. So that way of keeping separate and leveraging that purchase of service, kind of a, not really going all out. If we fully integrated the operation, we could leverage considerable amount of dollars in the range of several million. This would be consolidating the contracts under the City of DeKalb. So we would, and we'll show this in a minute, how we would do that. A larger fixed bus route contract would be more competition. We'd possibly get better pricing than what we've received in the past. We would have a single construct for the federal and state grants, so we wouldn't have to do the purchase of service. It would be under one construct, and the City of DeKalb would serve as the lead agency. We'd have a memorandum of understanding, an intergovernmental agreement with NIU, and then we'll be the grant recipient, and they will contribute to the local match and have a combined system that way. Possible funding scenarios. So right now, the city's system runs about three and a half million, and NIU's about four million, so combined about seven point five million. Right now, we're receiving grants, cover about sixty-five percent of our costs. The remainder is, our local match is developed by VAC in their nonprofit fundraising efforts, as well as some federal operating grants. So that's two point three of grants and one point two of that local match, and NIU gets zero. All of their money is paid for by student services. They don't take advantage of the grants at all. The combined system, we could leverage up to four point nine million in that combined system in grants, and see the local match of two point six. So we're doing one point two, and the university's doing four. That's five point two, and under this scenario, we would only cost us two point six. So you can see the advantage of two point six million dollars in this simple scenario. And obviously, NIU would have a great advantage, a great benefit from that, and the city could also, in terms of expanding its services for our ridership. So what are the next steps? This diagram shows, there's two of these, step one and step two. The first part is to develop an agreement to combine the system, and that's looking at over the next year. And that's primarily Bob's charge, is to help us develop the intergovernmental agreements and all of the operating documents that will bring those two systems together. Right now, the city bus system is about ninety percent paratransit and ten percent fixed. That's our, VAC is our operator, and we're using state and federal grants. The university's system is mostly fixed with some paratransit. And so what we would do is, we would separate those two systems into paratransit and fixed. NIU's system is primarily fixed. Keep that a hundred percent fixed. VAC is a great paratransit service provider. Keep the paratransit all with them. And that way, you kind of get the advantage of these two operating models specific to their expertise, their area of expertise. And the entire system is then available for grants. So combining those through the intergovernmental agreement will be our first step, and that's, we think we can do that over about a year's time. The second step, then, is to start to implement the route changes and start to do the improved efficiency and effectiveness of having a consolidated system. Now we start expanding into that Phase Two. We start enhancing some of our services in terms of paratransit, those flex lines that can serve the Park 88 area. And so that's where we would like to be in year two of the plan. As we look forward, there's really three or four areas that we're focusing on in our implementation. First, staffing. We've got to have experts to lead us through this process and then to manage this combined system. The City of DeKalb NIU Integrated Bus System is going to be a significant operation. We're going to need expertise in operating such a system. We're going to need expertise in managing the grants, and we're going to need to do our planning function that we currently do. So Bob is with us for one year, but after he's gone and the system is consolidated, it will need a permanent transit manager, a senior-level manager, to run that operation. We'll need that transit grant specialist, which we have in the budget for this year, and we'll be going out for that position shortly. And then also, we need to replace Jessica. One of our planners is gone. So ultimately, our structure will be two planners, a senior and a junior planner, a transit manager, and a transit grant specialist. Remember, all of these positions are fully funded by the state and federal government grants that we receive. We'll also be looking at governance structure. Right now, the Policy Committee is overseeing some of this activity, and we think that we're probably going to outgrow that in terms of operational expertise. And so we're looking to have experts from the community participate in the governance of the transit system, so that we can benefit from the expertise, the operational expertise, and get feedback as the system develops and grows. Grant management, that's a huge deal. That's the ballgame right there, is maximizing the money that you receive from federal and state grants. There's some program money out there that Bob knows a little bit about. It's called STIC. I'm not sure what the acronym is, but it basically has several parameters that you have to meet in terms of ridership, in terms of size of your system. We, out of six or seven of them, we meet one or two. With the combined system, we'll beat all seven. So we'll qualify for several additional grants through that program. And then lastly, is the contracting. Both the paratransit contractor, which is currently VAC, and the fixed transit contractor, which is currently under NIU, will be under the city. And then we'll have an intergovernmental agreement with NIU that will help us pay for those local match dollars. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and of course, any questions that you might have of Bob as well. Thank you.
Alderman Fanoukian.
Of course, Tim, you knew I was going to start off. First of all, Bob, welcome to DeKalb. Bob and I knew each other from my previous career, so I have some background with him. He's a great person in transit, so again, welcome to DeKalb, Bob, and thank you for being here. I want to put some things in perspective for our audience here. You know, you used the numbers up there before, but approximately one point three million riders. You know, that's a big number, obviously, but to put it in perspective, and I think it's still true, the Husky line is the second-largest passenger carrier in the state of Illinois behind the CTA. I mean, we carry more than Rockford, we carry more than Peoria, more than Springfield. I think that's something that the public needs to be aware of and have that in the perspective as we move along with this agreement.
Thank you for that. Thanks, Bill.
Alderman Favor.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add some comments from a constituent. John Luskowski, former city engineer, had written, he wasn't able to make it to the meeting, but he had several positive things to say about the consolidation plan, and you know, he thought that this was, obviously, it's a great idea, it's in line with the Safe Streets project that we were looking at, and the transportation, getting people out to the 3M, the Target Distribution Centers and things like that, is something that is needed. And then also, it goes along with what other universities are doing as well, Champaign, U of I, they have a partnership as well with the municipality. So he had some good comments to say about this, and he was for that. From your presentation, I don't really see any negatives. Of course, I love the consolidation and the cost savings that'll come along with that. Thank you.
Yep.
I am not as familiar with Bob as Bill is, obviously. I am not as familiar with Bob as Bill is, obviously. I met Bob earlier this summer, and I know that we were in the process of finding the right guy, and we're very fortunate to have Bob here for a year. I'd like, Bob, if you would, just to say a few words. I know we chatted a little bit before the meeting, and you said to me, this is really going to be something good for our community. Would you elaborate on that for just a couple of minutes?
Yeah, I've been doing quite a bit of consulting the last decade, mostly in university communities. And the dynamic communities have a good bus system. Young people get around. Young people stay in the town after, because they can live without a car, or a lot of times, families just have one car. You've got a wonderful proximity to the metro station. There's a real opportunity there to connect with that. And all the dynamics are there. The demographics are there. It's just a matter of putting it all together. And so I think that there's really an opportunity to put that together, and I think we should be able to do that. I did a lot of work in McComb with Western, and I think Western's about one point nine million passengers, so my goal is to beat that now, so I think we'll be able to do that.
Good. Thank you, Bob. Welcome. Any other comments from city council? I had no registered folks from our audience who wanted to speak to this. So, Tim, any closing comments?
Okay. Jerry?
Yes.
Michael?
Yeah. Alderman Markward.
So the planners would be paid through the DSATs, through the grant money. Are we looking at these other positions the same way?
Yes. All of the DSATs' structure would be funded through the grants, with a very small part coming from contributions by the DSAT's member organizations. Recall, we contribute, I think, fifteen thousand or so.
Right.
So do those other, so all except for that amount will come through the grants. For all the positions.
Hearing no other comments? Thank you, Tim. I appreciate it. Bob, welcome. Our next item on our committee of the whole agenda today is the Egyptian Theater proposal. And here to begin that conversation is our community development director, Joellen Charlton.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and community. I am here today, along with several members of the Board of Directors of the Preserve Egyptian Theater from PET. And as the report provided in your council packet tonight indicates, the purpose is really to compare and contrast the two studies that have been prepared over the last year. So as many of you may recall, back in January of 2017, you were presented with a very lengthy report from a consultant who provided you with the business planning and feasibility assessment for the Egyptian Theater. That was the culmination of an almost year-long-plus process that was authorized by the council to answer a variety of questions that kept coming up. Some of those questions, some council wanted to know if the theater could remain operational, if and when to end in, in anticipation of the ending of the first TIPS. Some wanted to understand the fiscal benefits of the theater and, you know, what do we need to do to make it stronger and have it provide the benefits to the community, the spin-off benefits to the community? Others wanted to know what types of organizational and programming models would be necessary to sustain a theater and the programming models, and any of the physical improvements that go along with that. So, you know, on and off throughout the years, there's been this conversation about air conditioning and other physical improvements that would be necessary to make the theater more successful. Ownership was also a big question that we kept hearing again from the council. So if we're going to be spending money on all of these improvements, you know, what happens in the event that PET or the theater goes away? How do we protect the city's investment? That was a very detailed, I don't know if you recall, but that meeting was very long, and we had a lot of very detailed information. I'm not going to go into it in detail, but I do want to give you the highlights of it so that I can compare and contrast it with the information that was presented by PET. So the major findings of the original report back in January of 2017 was that they did recommend that they, the PET continued to serve local organizations. So they saw that local flavor and providing opportunities for people to use the theater for their local events was, in fact, a very important component of moving forward. However, they did also feel that it would be necessary to support larger touring acts, and they were really kind of pushing into the regional performing arts center recommendation. And with that recommendation, because of the era that the theater was constructed in, that recommendation comes with requirements that certain building improvements need to be done. Air conditioning was one of those that had been talked about for a long time, but some of the other things that had been recommended in the study are things that while PET and those close to the theater have probably been aware of, I think it was the first time it had been expressed to the council and to the community. And some of those are what are called front-of-the-house improvements. So specifically, you know, we have one box office there, and if you, you know, keep in mind, the theater has fourteen hundred seats. So if you're coming into the theater with an expectation that it's going to be fully occupied, getting fourteen hundred people into and through one box office is pretty tough. Has a very small concession area. That's another front-of-the-house-type amenity. Bathrooms, those are a big issue. I think there's five-woman bathrooms available for the public. Again, do the math for, you know, half of fourteen hundred, and assuming seven hundred of them are women, you know, you've got two hours worth of waiting time getting through the bathroom. So that's, some of the other front-of-the-house or operational areas include some of the offices that are also required. The back-of-the-house issues address some of the things that are towards the staging and offloading and practicing, the dressing rooms, and all of those are important back-of-the-house features. And again, the administrative offices currently are kind of up in the second level of, right when you walk in the building and you go up, kind of have that nice stained glass window as their backdrop, but it's not very convenient or conducive to holding a lot of meetings. Some of the other recommendations included preservation of the historic elements, and again, they felt that was an important leveraging tool for the community to bring more visitors into the downtown and kind of build on that. The report also recommended ownership to the city, so that's a question that the council had been asking for some time. And the report provided several models of city ownership in other theater, city structures, and they felt like that was a good way to ensure the trust could be maintained. The report also felt that governance should go from a community-based volunteer organization to a broader-based public-private governance structure. And especially given the city's ongoing financial support, they really felt that and recommended that the city should have a seat at the table, so a voting representation. Currently, I serve as an ex officio member, so I have that connection to the board and share information with them, but the city doesn't have any voting rights on the board at this point. The report also recommended expanded management staffing for additional programming and operating. And they did also recommend a municipal financial support moving forward for operations to the tune of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. With that, they showed additional information that showed how the theater has the spin-off benefits, and they estimated that there's a two-plus-million-dollar amount of revenue generated in spin-off benefits from the theater. Again, that was very long, and there was very little time for questions. So the council, at the conclusion at that meeting, asked PET if they had a chance to review the report. They really hadn't gotten into it a whole lot, so the direction at that point was to send PET off to review the report and come back with recommendations. They did come back and met with staff in the middle of last year, and we kind of went through what they agreed with and what they didn't agree with. I'll focus now on what they didn't agree with, because that's where we get moving forward. Ownership was something that they did not agree with. So as an organization who prides themselves on the fact that they rescued the theater from the city when it was faced with a potential wrecking ball situation in the seventies, aren't real excited to give it back. That doesn't mean to say that they're not interested in coming up with a model that would allow for the transfer of ownership if and when the theater wasn't able to continue their operation. And also, they were not really in agreement with the governance, management, and programming recommendations in the original report. Again, a lot of details in there, but those were the main things that they disagreed with. They also really didn't feel like it would be appropriate to continue to pay that consultant to kind of take it to the next step. So I don't know if you recall, but there were recommendations as, here's where we need to go, and here's our next steps, and it was going to be a pretty expensive endeavor, again, more consultant fees to pay. And so the PET really felt like they could go through and do a lot of that work themselves. So that was in the middle of 2017, I think it was about June when we had that meeting with them. Because they were talking a lot about the programming models that they would rather see the theater move forward on, we asked them to put together a report that would allow us to do this, compare and contrast with the council. So if it's not going to be what this report recommended, what do you recommend? How are you going to own it? How are you going to propose your governance structure? What type of programming will you propose moving forward if, if we kind of go with your model? So again, they started their work. By the way, they, as part of doing all of this, they were, they had been working on their fundraising capacity all of last year, and were very successful, having some ongoing financial contributors sign up that would give them ability to have operational funding for that fall, so last fall, and for a few years moving forward. Moving forward into the fall, they were also, they had a new fall lineup that was pretty competitive and very successful. So they're doing all of this work while they're, while they're, again, trying to look at some of these issues. So we did get their report, their final report, at the end of last month, in January. Again, I'm just going to provide you the ownership that, or the highlights. So the ownership, again, they're really not interested in transferring, but interested in finding some common middle ground, something that accomplishes the city's goal, but allows them to continue to have ownership in the short term. Governance, they like their matrix of people that are serving on their board. And as a person who's been the ex officio member, I can tell you that they have diversified. They have a pretty good group of people serving on that board right now. They have pretty good mechanisms in place to replace people who have served out their term. So I think that is very positive. One thing that they did not address in their report moving forward that I think the council might want to have additional conversation about is whether or not you want seats on the board. So if that's something that you are looking forward to, I think we need to continue that dialogue. Management, they believe in their management structure, and they use last fall's success as evidence that they believe they can move forward, specifically because they received that additional funding for their operational support, and they were able to capitalize on that and have a very successful season. Programming, I think they kind of agree with the report in that they want to continue providing the local services and all of the benefits that that provides. They also want to grow the larger acts, but also realize that we have some timing issues we need to work out here. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. With regard to the building and construction, they spent a lot of time at the end of last year evaluating what needed to be done to the building and what they could do to move that forward. And what they've decided to do is focus on those major front-of-the-house issues. So that bathroom issue I discussed with you is something that they have tied together with a project that will include a two, well, I think they're still discussing it, but one of the proposals that they're considering is a full basement, single and second-story addition on the south side of the building that would provide bathroom, increased bathroom facilities, concession facilities, and then kind of an extra room that they're still evaluating at this point. That would be the first phase of what they're calling three phases in their proposal. Their proposal at this point, if the council is, I assume the council will be supportive of this, would be to move forward on that first phase with no tax dollar assistance. So I think they are, right now, hoping to get some cost estimates, do some additional fundraising campaigns for that capital improvement project for that first phase. The second phase would be some of the remaining front-of-the-house issues, like the box office and the administrative issues, support services. There's an elevator question as to whether or not that might or might not be required. That could all potentially be part of stage two. And then stage three would really start to get into those back-of-the-house issues that I talked about. Again, if we're going to have a national touring act, we need to be able to have loading dock facilities and not have a semi stopped in the middle of Locust Street, because the only way to get stuff into the stage through the back doors is by stopping in the middle of Locust Street. So PET really is, at this point, hoping to continue providing what the community wants in terms of programming, continue to provide that two-plus-million-dollar economic impact to the community, and improve the quality of life, because, again, they feel like providing these opportunities for our youth does a lot of additional nonmeasurable impacts to the community. So what are we here for? I know the council really wanted to kind of hear what was going on before they made any decisions on future funding for the theater. As you know, for many years now, the city council has been approving an annual amount or allocation of about a hundred thousand dollars to aid them in their capital, their annual capital needs. So different things that are required to keep the building or the asset up to date are part of that annual request. So they didn't want to forward that request until they provided you with this information and make sure that this is something good to bring forward to you at a future meeting. Also, they'd like to get some feedback from you on their proposed Phase One, some of the other recommendations that were forwarded to you in their report. In the future, they're probably also, again, going to be looking for that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in operational, but that kind of comes down the road when we're looking at future capital needs. And again, looking at the impacts of that because of the economic benefit it generates. I did include in your packet, just wanted to note for you, it was at the very end, some of the, what the other communities who have local theaters provide in terms of operational support. So the original report to the city and PET are both looking at that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, but you can see amounts of five hundred and ten thousand, three hundred thousand, five hundred and ten, and nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in some local areas. So at this point, I think our options account, the city staff forwarded this to you with questions and looking for your feedback as to whether we should bring their hundred-thousand-dollar request back, and then also the feedback on their report. So is there anything with their report, their construction, the ownership and governance models? Staff made some recommendations for you to consider in that regard, so we're looking for that feedback. I'd also like to mention that Alex is here and would like to make a couple of statements. I don't know if you want to do that now or after you've had a chance.
I think that would be appropriate.
Great.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Alex Neerad, and I'm the executive director of the Historic Egyptian Theater that is currently owned and operated by the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, Preservation of Egyptian Theater, Inc. As Joellen mentioned, I am joined here tonight by most of our board and staff. We have had continual growth in our organization and programming for a number of years, and this past fall, we saw tremendous success as a result of support from our new annual sponsors, First National Bank, Northwestern Medicine, Kishawaki Hospital, Topola Luna, and Shaw Media, all of which committed twenty-five thousand dollars a year for a three-year commitment totaling seventy-five thousand dollars. As a result of the increased programming and marketing we had last fall, we saw an increase of, from fall of 2016 to fall of 2017, we had sixteen more events, roughly eight thousand more patrons, patrons from seven additional states and twelve additional counties in Illinois, and an increase of half a million dollars in direct economic impact, bringing the total to over one million dollars for the four months we had programming last fall. The Egyptian Theater continues to show this community, our donors, and sponsors what a great investment the theater is. It provides impressive cultural and economic impact every single year with so much more potential. Our Board of Directors and multiple committees have been working hard over the last year to develop and implement plans for programming, facility improvements, and fundraising. We are finalizing a master plan for the facility to address current and future needs of the building. As many of you know, the theater was never finished in 1929, thanks to that little American As many of you know, the theater was never finished in 1929 thanks to that little American tragedy known as the stock market crash in October of 1929. Additionally, code requirements and the usage of performing arts centers has changed over the last 89 years since the Egyptian Theater opened its doors. Our goal is to provide the support spaces needed to efficiently, safely and competitively operate the Egyptian Theater with a sold-out audience on a regular basis year-round. We are excited to be here tonight to continue our conversation with the city about collaboration in order to reach the full potential of the Egyptian Theater. So I look forward to providing any answers to the questions you have during the discussion here this evening.
I thought the report that you and Joelle forwarded in terms of not only participation from other communities, what you've done over the past year was pretty comprehensive and complete and we appreciate that. Okay, let's turn it off, turn it around here to a council discussion. Again, we are not making any firm decision, we're just going to try to provide some input and some thoughts as we go forward here over the next few months and next few years. So thoughts please. Alderman Orico.
Thank you for coming today and for working on presenting us with more comprehensive I also want to applaud your efforts at expanding programming. I think it's been very evident, you know, in your numbers and also to the community. Given that and your desire to broaden the type of programs and acts that you're able to capture, I was curious why the back of the house, you know, construction ideas or proposals are number three and, you know, box office and support services are ahead of that. I would, I guess my thinking was if you improved those back of the house features, then you might be able to, you know, attract more acts and therefore that would kind of help pay for the, you know, administrative and support service improvements.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great point. In, you know, in a perfect world, we would like to move forward with all these phases at the exact same time. That would be the perfect world.
Good luck.
Yeah, realizing that, you know, through fundraising efforts and looking for grants and funding opportunities, that that may not be possible. We attempted to try and figure out if we needed to, how could we phase that? Certainly as we start to talk to donors and foundations and look at, you know, potential grants out there, we're looking at the possibility of funding all of those. But we're trying to be, you know, responsible that, you know, any step forward is going to be a benefit to this community and the theater. So that's why we attempted to kind of break those out into different phases to be able to move forward.
Well, I, I understand the breaking in into phases. I guess my question was the order of the phases. And I'm, you know, certainly not a construction expert, but just thinking of it in terms of if you're trying to attract more acts, you know, to make what those producers and artists are looking for more attractive.
Yeah, I guess our stance was we needed to take care of our patrons and the front of house services. You know, if we brought in a big show, but we can't accommodate the audience, then we've got this great show on the stage and a disaster in the audience. So we're kind of working, you know, I guess from our front doors in and trying to meet those amenities so that when we do reach that phase three and we can bring in these larger acts, we've got all the services available to completely support that, have a fantastic experience and build upon that success.
Okay. My other point is I would hope that talks could continue so that the city could have a substantive voice on the governing board. I recognize the desire for independence and not feeling like Big Brother is watching. But if the city is, you know, going to make a commitment, you know, and it has already made a commitment, you know, to the Egyptian, I think it's only reasonable that we have an opportunity for input and, you know, to get information and that there be an exchange. And I don't think, you know, it isn't from a desire for a heavy hand, it's simply, you know, in a partnership spirit.
Yeah, we just need, you know, and we've shared this with staff and they've been great to work with, that we just need clear direction from the council as to what it is that you would like, so that we have something substantive for our board to discuss and provide an answer for. And to get, you know, it'd be great to get examples from the city, from other 501(c)(3)'s that you guys may have voting seats on or formal relationships with. You know, there's a lot of different models out there with C6's and C4's and C5's. I'm not aware of any (c)(3)'s that the city currently has a voting seat on, but if there is, would love to look at that model and see what that looks like. But we just need clear direction on what you guys are asking so that we have something to discuss and respond to.
That's fair. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Fagan.
Well, this is, this is something that we can actually look at and see the return on our dollar, and which we'd like to see. I think you folks have done an excellent job.
Thank you.
I mean, you're more, you're more out there than you've ever been. When I look at the local government annual financial support of theaters, I'd like, I'd like to see us actually get, I mean, to get our return for our dollar and actually see it. But also I notice in here that the one company, Arlington Heights, it's owned by a nonprofit, you're a nonprofit, they get grants and we put in 100. Have you worked on grants?
And I am, sorry, the grants for the Metropolis Theater, that is primarily grants through the city there that they fund their capital projects, but they also do other grants just like we have as well, both for programming and capital projects.
All right. And then when it comes to the two-story, three, the two-story with the basement with the kickout on the south side, I mean, I can, I can see that. I mean, when you're talking about, I know that when I've been in there, I've heard complaints about the size of the bathrooms. I mean, I don't think I'd want to go there and have anybody watch the, from the line of the bathroom for the entire act, if you know what I mean. So, I mean, I think you're doing a good job. I think if we can see the return on the dollar, I mean, through the, through the tax money that we've received, the money that's brought into DeKalb, and we can see that, I don't have any problem.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. You know, TIF has been around now, what, close to 30 years? You know, and using the numbers that we've provided, the city staff has provided, the consultants on this study shows that the theater continues to have over $2 million in direct economic impact every year. The city has been very gracious and has supported the theater out of TIF with just over $2 million over the 30 years. So if you use those numbers, you know, even if you cut that in half at $1 million in economic impact, the city has invested, you know, about $2 million and has seen over $30 million in direct economic impact. To me, that's a pretty impressive return on investment. And we have, you know, the numbers to show that whether it's on the capital side of things as well as on the operating side of things, as the theater continues to grow, the ROI is without a doubt there.
Alderman Jacobson.
I don't know where to start. I'll start with some thoughts based on what Kate said. I agree again with a lot of the things she's saying. I have some questions as to, especially in the phases, if we are going to commit to this, what makes more sense in terms of a loading dock and things to increase shows or new office space for the administrators? Again, one has a return on investment that's definable and the other one is comfort for staff. Again, if you ask which one's more important to me, I'm sure you, you can guess which answer I'd give. Again, I think based on the last comments Alex just made and many comments in this report, there's a lot of inaccuracies here. To say that PET has maintained this theater for the last 30 years is false. The city of DeKalb has maintained this theater for the last 30 years.
It's actually been packed since 1978.
We have provided the vast majority of the funding to do so. While you manage the projects, we pay for them. The belief that being a nonprofit means you don't make any money is foolish. Kish Hospital is a nonprofit and they make billions of dollars of a year. The mere fact that you're a (c)(3) doesn't absolve you from the responsibilities of being at least cost neutral in my mind. Otherwise, you're not a profitable enough business to continue your operations. And while I appreciate
Which we have been.
That there's, again, with our support
On the capital side of things.
For the last many years. Correct. And if you didn't have a building, you wouldn't have a theater, you wouldn't have a business. So we can argue, back and forth argue on, at the end of the day, we've put more than two, we've put over 3 million into your building. In terms of ownership, at the very least, again, with that $3 million taxpayer investment in the building, I appreciate the fact that PET and their volunteer board has been an excellent steward of those funds, at least up until this point, in terms of not selling them off and not necessarily, and being very frugal with some of those monies. But at the end of the day, there have been opportunities for them to sell off the theater seating, to sell off parts of the warlets or organ, to sell off consoles, those things. And they've done so, again, without our approval or consent. The fact that we've now paid for those replacements, I feel strongly that we have a responsibility to the taxpayer, that we make sure those investments are protected, both in our building investments and in our purchases we've made with some of the money we've given to the theater. Again, I can understand why there'd be some consternation in terms of turning back that deed over at this point, being that 30 years ago, there was some thought at the city to dump the building. Again, I think there is a middle ground to that in terms of us owning the property, holding the deed, but not managing or operating the theater. I don't think any of us believe that that makes sense for us as a city right now and that we have the capabilities to do something like that. So again, I think there is middle ground in terms of the city of DeKalb holding the deed and possibly offering back a land lease to PET for 30 or 50 years at a dollar a year or whatever middle ground we come to. The reality is at this point, the investment is completely unprotected. If the theater gets themselves into financial trouble, if the theater starts to take loans to do some of these projects and can't come up with the money to do so, they have two options, beg us for more money or start selling off those things. And while I see board members and staff in the room shaking their head, that is a reality in some of these theaters and it's happened in many of the closures before. So again, if the money is to continue and the flow of money is to continue and that's the purview of the city council and the direction that they choose to go in, I feel strongly we should protect that asset to the best of our ability. In terms of some of the other presentation here, again, I would dispute the 3 million being that so many of our events, our local events, where again, people might not go out to get food, people might not go to get gas because there are so many community events held there. But regardless, even, even if we call it half and it's a million and a half dollars, there is no return on that in the city. At this point, with no entertainment tax and even in our best task, tax rate, restaurant and bar tax at 10%, we're not even breaking even at this point as far as I'm concerned in terms of our investment. While I appreciate monies being spent, again, I think the numbers are rosy at best in the document. In looking at some of the other community theaters, again, I think we got a small snapshot of the many that are in the state and in the northern Illinois region and realized that many of those and some of those are supported by gambling boats. And that's where a large proceeds, a large chunk of their funding is coming from, was when those cities allowed the gambling boats to come in, they required a fixed set of money from those companies to help run their arts to counter some of the negative perceived social aspects of gambling in riverboat casinos. We clearly don't have that opportunity. And in talking of, well, in talking of the voting rights and that we don't have that in other nonprofits, there's not another nonprofit coming to the city asking for 100 or 250,000 dollars. Again, this is, the ask at this point is almost twice what we put into all of our nonprofits we fund in terms of social services. So to pretend that that's not a standalone and a difference in how we do operations here, again, if you're coming to me and saying, well, I need 250,000 dollars to run my business, but you guys shouldn't have any protection on the money and you shouldn't have any voting rights and you shouldn't have anything, again, that's counter to what Barlow said. Remember, we paid several hundred thousand dollars for that study. And again, to me, that doesn't make sense. I appreciate the fact that you guys are a nonprofit. If you're coming to us and saying you need our money to continue to do things here, at the very least, we should have a seat at the table in terms of how the money is being spent and how the theater is being run. So again, I would disagree with many of the things in the report and certainly think the Barlow report jokingly before it was issued, I said a lot of those things would be coming back out, that the city should probably own the building, that we should have seats on the board. It was very unsurprising to see those things when the final report was issued. Again, we cannot just keep throwing money at this thing without a willingness for the theater to come to the table and at least make us partners in the deal. We're funding all of the capital improvements at this point. At the very least, we should have a seat at the table.
Thank you, David. Alderman Markward.
So what, help me remember, what was the beginning point of this whole thing? What was the impetus for doing the Barlow?
2015, talking about whether it was a worthwhile investment to put air conditioning in the theater to be open year-round. That's what spurred this.
That's what spurred this, okay. And so what's, what's our goal as a city? That's what I'm trying to wrap my head around. If our goal as a city is to...
I, I mean, our goal is what your goals are as outlined in the strategic plan. So, you know, making the downtown area a vibrant community downtown, bringing more people, bringing more visitors to the community, making it an attractive place for students of Northern Illinois University to want to come to so that we can get our enrollment back up. So I think there's a lot of various things that are tied through the strategic planning that all of our efforts in downtown are geared to do. And the Egyptian Theater has been and continues to be one of those major things that's already there. One of the things I think that's really important is that when you look at other towns who are trying to create that, you know, that feeling, that entity, that, that pop to get the area going, they spend a lot of time and money trying to get something like this to come to the area. We already have it. We have it here and I think that the ask at this point is how do we make it stronger and what needs to happen in order to have that happen?
Okay. So I guess I look at it in a different viewpoint than a lot of people because I'd be more than willing to give them 100,000 every year because they turn that around, they get additional money and they're paying for other capital improvements on their own. It's a thing that supports our community and it's not necessarily, sometimes you're not going to get like all of this business return on investment other than having a place that is a community center that is open for acts of all types. I mean, everything. They have musical touring groups, they have the local dance groups, you have all of these things coming into one place. And basically, they're asking for some assistance in doing so. I don't think that we have any voting rights on, and I'm going to go way out there because I'm going to go extreme tonight. Mr. Pappas does not allow us to vote on his organization with his buildings, correct? If you say 3 million over the last years, we gave, we've agreed to give him somewhat similar in the last two years. And we're not necessarily telling him how to run his business, okay? But we're making an investment in our overall community. But we're making an investment in our overall community. So as far as I'm concerned, the PET has been running the place, they haven't overextended themselves since 1978 that I know of, that they needed to totally be bailed out. Why are we bashing them and saying that we need to take over? I don't understand that. They have a plan in place of how they see the theater growing. Man, back in the 90s when I was here, there was movies. And that was movies. And that was pretty much, there was occasionally some other acts and it was cold and you couldn't sit there for more than 20 minutes without your butt falling asleep. All right? So over the years, they have done the improvements. What is so hard about us as a city supporting that? I, I don't see, and, and it's a support and it pays back. Yeah, it doesn't come right back into the city coffers, but it comes back into the hillside, to Tapaluna, to, you have a gas station. I live four blocks away and I will walk downtown, get something to eat and then go to the place for, for the event. I'm not coming from out of town, I'm staying right here, four blocks away. I walk. I go get something to eat, I go to the event. I can understand why the, the board is pushing back on, on a lot of these things, you know? So I guess I'm more supportive of continuing to support the theater, not taking over the We've got other issues on our hands as a city that are way more important, that we need to focus our attention on rather than this bright spot in the center of it. So.
We've had a number of comments, Alderman, in favor. I'm going to have one or two more comments and then we're going to wrap this up because we're well beyond our committee of the whole allotment. And I'd like to get city council meeting started no later than 6:30 here tonight. Alderman, favor?
So I'll make it brief. I'm, I'm in agreement, I, with Alderman Markward. I, I just wanted to congratulate you guys on the great work you guys did over the past year, really saw the improvements in programming. I would support $100,000 annual support to the Egyptian theater, whether that goes into the oper- I was going to say I didn't want to support operations, but if it goes to operations or capital, if it's going to go another 150 above that, then we would need to have a longer conversation. Thank you.
Alderman O'Raikil.
I wanted to clarify that my comments regarding the city participating on the board were not with the intent of taking over the board or taking over ownership. I wanted there to be discussions on the city participating on the board in the spirit of partnership because I see the difference between the support we provide to the Egyptian versus any developer as this is ongoing support, commitment, you know, discussion versus a specific project. So again, you know, I, I just want to see, you know, is ongoing discussion on that, I want to see what ideas might, you know, come forward. But I'm, I'm looking for a more substantive role for the city than we perhaps have had in the past. But, you know, I too would support, you know, ongoing financial measures, you know, for the Egyptian.
Alderman Verbic.
Yes, and while we have a lot of competing priorities, I would say that the Egyptian theater is an extremely valuable asset to the city of DeKalb. So please do bring back ideas for what that $100,000 per year looks like. And also, I would like us to be an active participant in building a funding model for that $250,000 in the future. What does that look like? Is it a portion of ticket sales? You know, what are the other options we have as a municipality to, again, be part and parcel to what's been truly, again, a very valuable resource to the city, not only from the perspective of getting people downtown, but also just that, that notion of, gosh, how do you, how do you describe it? You have a key place in your city that people can think of DeKalb, that DeKalb, oh, they have that Egyptian theater. And it's, some of it's hard to explain and justify while I'm speaking to you now, but I will say, please do come back with your ideas. Thank you.
If I can, just real quick, Mayor, you know, I think it's important to note, just real quick, so there's not any misinformation out there, to Alderman Jacobson's point earlier, there has never been anything at the theater that has been paid for with TIFF that PET has sold off. So it's important to know that in terms, we take it very seriously, the TIFF dollars that we've managed and put into the theater. So I don't want there to be any misinformation out there that we've sold off anything that TIFF dollars have paid for. So that's incorrect. You know, in terms of the operating model, we believe that we have a model that can continue without any city operating support. We haven't been receiving operating support. And there's always kind of this gray area with the capital support. And it's important to note that while we have received this $100,000 a year, you know, that goes replacing the roof, upgrading the fire alarm system. And so while that needs to take place at some point, the reality is if one year that roof doesn't get replaced, the doors aren't going to close. The unfortunate reality is that it may start to cause damage to the building, but the theater's not going to close because of that. And on the operating side of things, I think what we really want to share with the community is the theater's been operating since 1978 under this nonprofit. And so we'll be able to continue doing that. We may, we may not be able to do it at the level you currently see it today with programming and staffing, but the doors aren't going to close. That's not our intention, we don't see that happening. So really, the conversation is about, both from the city and the community, is that there's this tremendous potential here that so many communities would kill for. And so should we as a community step up and provide that investment to really see this potential and have so much impact on our community? And so to reach that potential, we just need clear direction from you guys on kind of two things that have been discussed here tonight. One, in terms of securing any additional city funding, we're planning to meet with Joellen and other city staff to talk about all the different mechanisms. We're not planning on going anywhere and doing anything. We're not planning on selling the theater. That's not on our horizon whatsoever. So we're open to lots of other ideas on how to secure that investment so that the community, city council, other donors feel confident about the future of the theater. So we look forward to those conversations. And then we also need clear direction from you guys on what is the ask? Do you want a voting seat on the board? Do you want an ex officio? Do you not? We can discuss all sorts of ideas, but we need a concrete ask from you guys on what it is that you want for different funding opportunities so that our board has the opportunity to discuss that and get back to you. So those will be kind of our immediate things to be able to take care of.
What I think I hear tonight is a, an uptick, if you will, in the discussion that we've had over the past six or seven months. There's been a lot of progress made at the Egyptian theater programmatically, board-wise, and we appreciate that. I also hear that there may be the need to further discuss whether or not we have a ex officio voting, whether or not there's strong enough support from this city council on whether we feel that a voting member should come from the city. We also could very well do what I think we need to do a better job of, and that is to have a liaison from this council serve as a liaison to the Egyptian theater. So you asked for some specifics. Alex, you're going to get some specifics.
Wonderful.
Because I'm going to work with Joellen, I'm going to work with this city council, I'm going to work to see exactly what it is that we want. And then when we meet together in a conference room or at the Egyptian theater, hopefully not in one of your restrooms, we will, in fact, have a better understanding of what it is that we want to do going forward. We have tap danced around the Egyptian theater for Sue, for too darn long, in my opinion. So I hope what you've heard tonight, that you can grab onto a few things and see where we as a council are. We're going to be much clearer in our message to you. We want you to continue to be clear to us. My clarity right now is that I want our city council meeting to start at 6:30 in 10 minutes. So unless either of you have something that is breathtakingly important, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Public participation.
Public participation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.